Four, three, two, one. All right, we're back and we're going to do a little sound check to make sure, Dr. Webb, we see you in the WebEx. Are you there? Are you there, Dr. Webb? Hello, Dr. Webb? Dr. Webb, are you there? Dr. Webb? Can you hear us? Dr. Webb, are you able to hear us? I think I heard, Dr. Webb.
Yeah, we were in the elevator shaft moving between 11 and 10 with the black up and not to lose signal. So we're now in Dr. Webb's office. So maybe there's a second, is he clear?
Can you text them?
Councilman Mendez, this is Joel Sullivan. I just spoke with Dr. Webb's group and they're trying to get the audio working on that computer.
All right, thanks, Mr. Sullivan. I'm just gonna, if you could ask Mr. Overlock or somebody at the group to, ask Mr. Overlock to call my cellphone when they're ready to go, okay?
We're ready.
Dr. Webb, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great, thank you. All right. Somebody needs to mic or mute one of their other devices. We're getting feedback. All right. I'm going to give the ground rules for these meetings and then we're gonna turn on the hospital authority and it's gonna work great. So here's the ground rules. Welcome, everybody. It's the last day of the Budget and Finance Committee operating budget hearings. The ground rules for our WebEx presentation of these committee meetings is that we're expecting that all council members participating have read the materials in the budget book and the materials submitted in advance by the departments. We are going to stick to operating budget questions and we're going to stick to the time allotted. We've got multiple ways for council members to ask questions. They had an opportunity to ask questions in advance to the council office. We've got the Q and A function live in the bottom right-hand corner of the WebEx where any council member can type in a question. We'll collect all those afterwards, get answers, post them for all council members and the public on the Metro Council Resources webpage. We already have well over 50 questions and answers online on various topics. It's a great resource. For the hospital authority, we've scheduled 30 minutes, so we're going to go to 4:41 at the latest. And with that, I'm confident we are going to have the sound issues resolved. We'll ask the hospital authority to make an opening comment and then we'll take questions from council members. Hospital Authority, are y'all there?
Here. Yes, we're here.
All right, great, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Are we ready?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to just express thank you to the council and the administration for all of your support over the last year, over the period that we've already exhausted. And thank you for taking time today to listen to our presentation. There are a few things that I wanted to share quickly with you, just to set the stage for what we're asking for. As a respondent in crisis situations, I want to address Nashville's general position when the tornado struck Nashville back in March of this year, early March. We were there, we delivered food to those that were needing water, we delivered health screens and directed individuals for urgent care regardless of whether they had the ability to cover that care or not. As it relates to the pandemic that came just a short time after that, we have played a major role in that at the partnership with the Nissan Stadium where it was one of our primary test sites. One of our primary test sites. We participated in delivering 4,300 tests in collaboration with the Chair of Health and Hospitals, Council Lady Hurt and Metropolitan Development Housing Agency, MDHA. We delivered 588 tests, MDHA employees, we delivered 318 tests. And in partnership with a food pharmacy and the foundation, Nashville General Hospital Foundation, we have to this day delivered to food insecurity populations beyond our patients 2,000.
Somebody needs to mute their phone, please. Go ahead, Dr. Webb.
Okay. So I was just speaking to the food insecurity population that we've been serving beyond our patient population. We have to this day delivered 2,200 food insecurity toasts to those individuals that have been impacted by the pandemic. And with each one of those toasts, there are six days of three meals each day, which equates to about 40,000 meals that we've delivered thus far. Now, the aftereffect of COVID-19 is that minorities and individuals that are underserved will continue to experience and be victimized by that. There is a disproportionate share of that population that are being impacted and as a result some are experiencing high mortality rates. The residual impact will continue to be a part of our community for a while. There are more uninsured patients and residents that will surface as a result of that. So with that, they're going to need more of the resources of Nashville General Hospital. Those with chronic illnesses will experience an even greater risk. And for those that are faced with even more challenges, we're going to see those on a daily basis. So as an asset to the city, Nashville General Hospital, the chronic care model at Nashville General Hospital delivers excellent outcomes and it helps to control costs. There is, just FYI, an article that was produced in the American College of Healthcare Executives, it's now on social media, that reveals the results of our delivery system here at Nashville General Hospital and it's put there for educational purposes for other providers and other healthcare systems to be able to duplicate the systems that we have in place and generate similar outcomes in their own hospitals. And this is a national magazine. So we have also received an A rating in our service for patient care through the lead fraud saying that we are one of the safest organizations, only about a third of hospitals across the country receive that. And we are also a provider in a teaching environment for physicians that are trained in the areas of OB, obstetrics, gynecology, family practice, internal medicine and others through Maharry Medical College. We are not considered as ourselves the hospital of last resort, we are your community hospital. And the subsidy that we receive from the city on an annual basis is less than half of our operating cost budget. And every dollar that we do receive at Nashville General Hospital from our city budget is used to meet our patients' needs as well as additional dollars that are brought as a result of us being a safety net hospital here in this city. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of overview of what we've been doing and how the resources that we've been allotted have been applied to the community's needs. I'm here with Chief Financial Officer Bruce Daramore. He is now going to engage you in a little more granular conversation regarding the package of fight assets that will be discussed in a second. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Can you hear me, Councilman Mendez?
I can, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to, I sent a packet out today, I think probably Danielle forwarded it to the council members. It was a packet just repeating because I don't know where everybody is physically located today. It's a little challenging and I know we're doing this by audio. So I sent a packet that reflected what our February request was, just so everybody can reacquaint themselves. We did request $46.2 million at the time, based on our best estimates in February before all of these issues hit the community and the hospital. And the mayor has suggested and advanced a $43.1 million subsidy for the hospital. And we have not yet made those corrections that we would need to make to get down to that $43.1. The first and most obvious impact will be that we would very likely be unable to have raises in 2021. And I think that's probably common throughout the area at this time. The raises are about $1.1 million of impact, so that takes that gap down to about $2 million. And then we have longevity awards that are provided to our longer-term employees, that's about $125,000. So we've still got another $1.9 million to locate and we're working diligently on that to get this budget number at the 43.1 that the administration has advanced. And we appreciate it because that's consistent with the number that we're drawing down this year. I will say to Dr. Webb's point, and I did send at the back end of the packets that you received, there are a couple of graphs in there that I just think, especially for the new council members, I'd like you to understand that Metro, which we greatly appreciate, is about $43 million this year and potentially again next year. And that's a little over 40% of our budget is provided by Metro. We basically provide about 40% ourselves through self-generated revenues for the paying patients that come to the hospital. And then we receive $15, $16 million from the state and other sources due to our nature to disproportionate share dollars and our role in the public hospital's safety net pool dollars. So it is not true that the hospital is completely funded by Metro, it's about 40%. I just point that out. And so also, there's a graph in there that shows you what the Metro subsidy has been for the last four years. We have tried to be good stewards of the city's money. Many of you recall back in 2017, there was a supplemental allocation on top of the $35 million. We were actually budgeted for a total of $52.1 million for fiscal year 2018. We drew 48 that year. That was the year of the potential closure. So we turned back $4 million of the budgeted dollars back to the city. In 2019 fiscal year, $46.1 was budgeted and we only spent $44.1, the other $2 million was returned to the city. This year with the pandemic in February, I thought we were very much on pace to basically hit our $43 million subsidy. And we're going to figure out to get there this year, but it's very, very tight. The pandemic alone cost the hospital $3 million in net revenue that we lost over the last two months because our outpatient services were basically closed due to executive order. Obviously, our emergency room volumes have dropped in half, March, April, and now starting to return. Our OR services are back up, so those numbers are starting to return. But we had about a $3 million net revenue impact for those two months. We did receive $835,000 from the CARES Act for our Medicare and Medicaid spend from 2018, actually. So we did get $835,000 to cover what is at least a $3 million hole. Unfortunately, the revenue loss is not reimbursable via FEMA. We have engaged, or we're working on a contract with the same disaster recovery consultants that the city is using for their FEMA claims. And because we're a hospital, it may be a slightly different technical resource, but it will be the same approach. We expect that we could have anywhere from a half million dollars to maybe $750,000 of eligible expenses to be reimbursed via FEMA, but we need technical assistance to get there. We have been working with Mary Jo Wiggins as well in Metro Finance to help us through the process. She has a lot of history with disaster recovery and prior roles as well. So those are sort of basics. I would just say, as far as finding the $3.1 million difference, the raises obviously are a good start. We expect that there will be some lease revenue. Many of you may have heard about an alternate care site that is being constructed inside the hospital here by the state in cooperation with the federal government for COVID response in the future. That work is ongoing. They are leasing space in the hospital. That lease is not yet executed, but potentially the lease revenue associated with that would be available to offset some of this $3.1 million gap that we have. That's number one. Number two, there is also an operating agreement. I'm sorry, there was an operating agreement also that would potentially have some margin for the hospital. They have asked our medical staff, our Chief Medical Officer and Chief Nursing Officer to steward and oversee the clinical services at that site. And they would also rent ancillary services from the hospital that we would provide to them, basically on a ratio of cost of charges. We're still working through that template right now. But that's potentially, you know, some other dollars. The lease looks like it's 28,000 square feet of space and I don't think we've set for sure the rate yet, but potentially, you know, $700,000 to $1 million for a one-year lease that's in the works currently. So that could help offset the $3.1 million as well. We're also looking at every significant contract. You know, as a public entity, many of our contracts have language that allow us to, subject to funding. So we're approaching all of our large vendors for concessions. In some cases, there may be services that we can do without. Dr. Webb, Dr. Bullock, ourselves, we're also looking at services. I think Dr. Webb mentioned, we expect to have a higher influx of uninsured patients probably, just due to the nature of what's happened with the economy. And that's what we're here for. So we're trying to be selective about any services that would be impacted. We're certainly not talking about taking down any of the hospital's primary services or clinical services, but we may have to take some looks at how much availability in some physician services that we currently enjoy. It may require that waits or to see a specialist or some service may be longer than what we recently enjoyed. So that's what we have been working on and I think we're here to answer questions from the council.
All right, thank you. I'm going to take care of a little bit of technical business before opening to questions. We've got a couple council members participating by telephone and I want to make sure we've got a connection there. Councilmember Allen, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. If you have questions, as we get a little bit further in, jump in and let me know, I'll get you somewhere in the queue. Councilmember Porterfield, can you hear me?
Councilman Mendez, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you. Same for you, if you end up having questions, just holler and we'll get you in the queue. If any other council members are on the phone, we need to have the IT folks specifically designate your phone to be able to participate. Please email Danielle in the council office or Mr. Cooper in the council office and let us know if you're on the phone. Otherwise, we're going to dive in and first in the line was Councilman Druffel.
Thanks, Chair. And thanks for everything you can do, doctor. There was a question on how many unfilled FT employees does your department currently have? And the response was, there's 40 nursing physicians, but they're filled by contract labor, which is two and a half times more expensive. Can you comment on that and what is that incremental cost of using contract versus our own labor? Thank you.
Councilman Druffel, this is Bruce Daramore, the CFO. Dr. Webb deferred on this one, although he's well acquainted. We have had, maybe historically, and I think the announcement back in 2017, it just, the threat of a closure and there have been historic ones over many years here. I think certain people come to Nashville General to work and as soon as you start to hear that there might be a closure, it's just natural that this is people's livelihood. They start looking around because they don't want to get hit by the bus when something like that occurs. So I think both the hospital and Maharry suffers significant staff and physician losses late 2017 into the summer of 2018. And we've all been sort of digging our way back, both their providers and our providers, plus our nursing staff and even our support and ancillary staff. So unfortunately, you know, when I have an accountant that goes out, you know, we'll figure out a way to get it done, but when a nurse leaves the ICU, I cannot have four patients being taken care of by one nurse in a critical care setting. The joint commission would come in and put the hurt on us in that scenario. So we have to provide adequate staffing ratios for nursing. And I think the challenge for us is how do we attract and retain nurses here at the hospital? That's our biggest challenge, Councilman Druffel, but it is. And I'll just give you the rough numbers. A staff nurse here averages about $28 an hour pay plus benefits. A contract nurse is either $71 or $73 an hour. And that's when I say two and a half, I'm probably a little light there. So it is true that we do have a large contract labor spend. It's been steady for the last year, but it continues to be an area that we could say we spend almost three and a half million dollars a year on contract labor. If I could replace that with my own staff, it'd probably be a million four. So that would be a $2 million savings perfectly executed.
Yeah, I guess the question is, I guess, just someone that has a business, is there not a value raising the rate of pay for nurses to possibly attract them? You know, I know the contract is absorbing the profit of the contract.
Right.
But is it not that tough?
I mean, that's a common tactic that's used, but at the same time, that's also used by other larger systems. And essentially, what you start to create at that point is a price loss. And so what we do is we look at different incentive models. We're at the drawing table constantly looking at different ranges to create. The best solution is to create a work environment that is conducive to retention, which is also in turn conducive to recruitment. So those are the things that we're doing. You know, when something like what happened to us goes across the country, much less throughout the city, continues to put a, you know, a negative image on, you know, the security within the environment. So, you know, one caution is that we really need to be careful about how we constantly talk about cutting and reducing and eliminating. I mean, people throw that terminology around all the time and every time someone hears it, you know, puts another nail in the coffin. So we're constantly looking at creative ways of addressing nurse recruitment and retention. We have some very intelligent people working on that. It is a very difficult task. There's a nursing shortage across the country. You can't just raise the pay and wave the why and that goes away.
Anything else, Councilmember Druffel?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Hurt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Webb, and all of your staff for the work that you do. Just a little earlier today, we had a minority caucus webinar in regards to COVID-19 and the question was asked about the screenings that needed to be done outside of COVID-19. Dr. Hall had spoken of the fact that the one person who actually did test positive, that the screening that was done revealed that he had diabetes. And I was just wondering if you all had plans to do screening, particularly at your Charlotte location, and if you had funds in the budget enough for you to expand, especially if you weren't able to provide that type of screening at public housing facilities?
Well, we have a team of individuals that do our screening for us in the clinic. You know, if a patient comes in to have that service performed, then that would occur at that site. I mean, even on campus clinic, the same thing would happen. But we haven't made any specific plans to go out and stand up any screening sites independent of, you know, the needs of the city or the, you know, such as what we did with MDHA and working collaboration with you and the MDHA leadership. So nothing beyond that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we've got Councilman Glover.
Chair.
Go ahead. Yeah, we hear you, go ahead.
Okay, well, I was trying to figure out if I'm doing it from the phone, because I've got the phone and the computer on, we can't figure out which way is working. All right. So with that being said, let me just ask a couple of questions. I hate the fact that apparently we're still living from three years ago because we had a period of time that we were trying to figure out how do we, you know, make this continuous on the funding and deal with that. Now the circumstances have changed again, not only for the hospital, but for the entire country, you know? So it's, we have a completely budgetary environment that is much different than it was 90 to 120 days ago. Given the realities of what may continue to occur, not only here in Nashville, but throughout the country, is there a group that's working aggressively on where things can be trimmed, how things can be consolidated, how you can move perhaps services that aren't being utilized in the utmost areas efficiently? And I don't want to use the word efficiently, but ways that perhaps could be used outside with another hospital cooperation to continue to cut costs because that's happening in every business across the country. It's not singled out to you, it's not singled out to any particular city or state, it's just, it is what it is. We've had a major drop in the economy and with that, we've also had a major drop in operating revenue. So the real question is, how deep and how hard are you looking at what could be consolidated in the event all the money is not going to be there for the upcoming budget? Or if we get into it and we hit another hiccup and we just have to, we go ahead and have to trim? What kind of, what kind of a... What kind of, what kind of planning is being done? Contingency planning is being done for moving rapidly for another drop in revenue? Drastic drop in revenue?
Yeah, I'll just, Steve, this is Bruce. I think you know me pretty well. I'm not leaving many stones unturned. I think the challenge becomes which of your core services are you ready to lock off or flip onto another? And you realize that in some cases, if it's a service that Nashville General provides and we refer that uninsured patient out to another campus because we no longer have that service, we're oftentimes required, we're often required to then pay for that service out of our already limited budget. So we try to make calls on what's the most efficient way to take care of some of these patients in the least costly setting? And I'll tell you, we do it all the time. And I know you spent some time with us a couple of years ago. I would love for you to come out and walk through us because, you know, the alternative to Nashville General is probably a really expensive one if you tried to set up an insurance plan. But I am very active and everybody here knows that there's been budget meetings every morning, every week, from basically nine to 11, where we've been talking about where we can cut costs today, not tomorrow. And we're very actively talking about that. Raises is an obvious one. That's just the first blink. We got to get down to this $3.1 million. And we've got to go further because not everything that we do is going to hit 100%. So you're preaching to the choir and we know, and it's true, that we might have to go still deeper. But at that point, it becomes which services are we willing to sacrifice and still maintain the integrity of the academic programs that we have with Mahary?
Well, and I'm glad you mentioned Mahary. So given the economic conditions that are occurring, once again, on every campus, in every business, in every, you know, in every corner of our country right now, has any conversations been had with considerations of lowering the rent or doing away with the rent on the hospital over the next 12 to 18, 24 months until the economy can fully reboost back up and be recovered here in Nashville? Any conversations of that nature going on?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, I would expect that they would probably view that as being a part of their own revenue generation. So that would be just shifting our burden to them and vice versa. So I don't know how well that would go over.
Well, not really asking how well anything would go over right now. I'm asking what are we looking at? Because, believe me, there's going to have to be some decisions made that nobody likes making. But it's just the fact of where we are right now. And unfortunately, it is the fact of where we are. So I'm merely asking business questions on the things that I would sit down and I would claw into hard because I believe that, you know, Mahary has asked us to have certain services. And so in order to carry those through, if those aren't really options in order to reduce costs, you know, how can we partner on this in order to, you know, take the burden on as a whole, I guess, is what my question is?
Are you asking something different than you asked before or more?
No, I'm just, no, it's, I'm just, I'm simply saying that, you know, while it may be an uncomfortable conversation, I think it's a conversation that will be required. And, you know, we talk about no stones are left unturned. Well, that's apparently one that hadn't been turned over yet. So I would recommend we do those things because everybody's feeling this right now. With that, Chair, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, everybody, so there's three people left in the queue. I'm going to keep it to those three and go over time. The three are Councilmember Swara, Toomes, Hurt. Anybody else has questions, please put them in the Q and A section. And I do, if the council members could keep it brief and discreet, and anything that's a longer conversation, we can pick up in the Q and A section. With that, Councilmember Swara. Councilmember Swara. We are going to pass over Councilmember Swara. Come back to her, Councilmember Toomes. Councilmember Toomes, are you there? You're muted still?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Councilmember Swara. Is that you, Councilmember Swara?
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. I was trying to use a headphone, but it wasn't working. I'll make it brief. One, I want to caution us again.
I am.
Go ahead, Councilmember Swara. We'll get to Councilmember Toomes next. Go ahead. Self-ack. Go ahead.
All right. And so while I'm not responding officially for management, I can say that the payment of the lease does not come to Mahary directly. It goes through the bond payment. And so that much I'm aware of. And so asking to not pay that creates a burden on that side as well. I wanted to put that out. But I still welcome the composition if Jada wants to do that. But I know from walking there as the assistant controller that that money goes straight to satisfy the bond on the bill. My question is, we received the PowerPoint presentation with the financial statements this afternoon. And on page six of that financial statement, it has that the public hospital supplemental budget is at $9 million. When looking at the mayor's budget, that money from the federal government is budgeted or put at $6.5 million. And so I just wanted to see where the difference is from that PowerPoint presentation. Is that an additional opportunity to get three more millions from that pool that is not reflected yet? That's one question. And then the other question that I, the last one I'm going to add to, of the money that Jada is spending or looking forward to spend, is any of it reimbursable through the CARES Act? Thank you.
Councilmember Swara, yeah, it's always good to have another finance person in the crew. So I appreciate your questions. As far as the $6.5 million that the city puts up as match for our public hospital pool cooldown, basically, that's the required match. It's just an estimate right now in the budget. So it has varied between $7 and $6 million the last few years. There's a large pool of about $100 million that's available to the public hospitals. That's us, Erlanger, and the med, and Regional One, I'm sorry. And it's based on our pro rata costs as these three entities. And then the pool is basically allocated on those bases. So we in Metro Finance, we do not know what the amount that's going to be given to General. And then it's a percentage, basically, that the city matches as the local match in order to draw those dollars down. So the $6.5 right now is just a placeholder. Best guess, it's somewhere between six and seven. So we put it in the middle there. Metro Finance clearly recognizes that getting $2 for one is a good investment. And Mark Overlock and I have spent a lot of time trying to get that pool increased because we have more uninsured and Medicaid and eligible dollars that could be reimbursed through that project. But the state has not increased that cap above $100 million. And until they do, we're all sort of trapped in that $100 million total. It's been that for at least three years. So, and I'm sorry, your second question?
The second question was about whether there are other things that may be CARES Act eligible for reimbursement.
Okay. The second, as far as we, like I said, we are working with the disaster recovery consulting team that the city is utilizing and has utilized for the flood from a long time ago. I've used them in other hospitals and they're very good. But we needed to get an addendum in place. It'll be at our board meeting this week. We plan to use them right now, Councilmember Swara. I believe there's probably somewhere in the $500,000 range of what I believe are clearly eligible expenses. And when I say that, personal protective equipment and so forth that we've spent quite a bit of money on over the last few months, other supplies related, and then the overtime related to taking care of patients in this sort of timeframe. We had hoped that some of the expenses that we spent going out to the assessment centers and these testing sites would have been eligible. But unfortunately, we have been instructed that those are not eligible. And therefore, you know, what I thought might have been as much as $1.5 million is now probably something about a third of that. But we're not going to leave any stone unturned. We're going to pursue it. And with the specialists from DR Consultants, we're hoping they can find us a few other avenues to pursue.
Thank you. Councilmember Toomes?
Thank you, Chairman. Couple of questions. What is the dollar amount in uncompensated care that Nashville General provides from a annual basis? And how does that compare to other hospitals in the area?
Yeah, I'll just say, as a percentage of the care that we provide, it's probably a little over 40% of our patients. And our revenues are tied to patients that don't have the ability to pay. So, you know, but my hospital is a lot smaller than Erlanger or Regional One. So it is, it is obviously smaller in dollar amount. But as a percentage of our total costs and our total patient revenues, it's significantly larger than either of those two systems. And just to make sure everyone understands, you can be an uninsured patient and you don't have to go to my emergency room. You can come to our actual clinics. You can even have care provided, x-rays. You can have cancer care. We don't discriminate in some other, I'm not down to other facilities, but you have access to all the services Nashville General provides. You are not, there's no wallet biopsy before you're allowed to see the doctor.
And I'm glad you mentioned the totality of services that Nashville General provides. If you were to have to cut some of those core services, is it realistic to think that most of your patients will be able to go to other facilities and receive the same totality of services that they receive at Nashville General?
I mean, Councilman Toomes, there are several heads shaking no around the table, including our ER director and chief medical officer, who knows a few things?
Thank you.
Sure.
And thanks, Councilmember. Last for the hospital, last for the hospital authority will be Councilmember Hurt. Councilmember Hurt, are you there? Or is that a hand up from before still? All right, I'm going to assume it was just up from before. Going once, Councilmember Hurt, twice. Moving on. All right, Dr. Webb, Mr. Narumore, thank you so much. We, in addition to just coming and doing the regular budget stuff, you know, we know you all are on the front lines and your staff is on the front lines providing care for people in Nashville through this virus and the epidemic. And please, please thank everybody, your department heads, everybody in your team for all the work you're doing to help keep Nashville safe.
Thank you, Councilman Mendez. And we'll certainly pass that on and appreciate you guys and your continued support.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, everybody, we're going to move on to, I guess, a sound check first to see whether Dr. Battle is present on the line.
Yes, Councilman Mendez, I'm on the line.
All right, thank you. I think you, y'all know the ground rules that we've got for the council. Everybody is expected to have read the materials y'all have submitted. For all the other hearings we've done, we've kept pretty close to a scheduled timeline for you guys as long as you're willing to stick around and ask questions. We figured that we would keep it as long as council members have questions. So if you want to make an opening comment, then we'll open up to questions and we'll dive in. Thanks, Dr. Battle.
Thank you. And if I can do just a quick check, I know several of our board members are joining us today as well as our Budget and Finance Chair and Chris Henson, who is our Chief Operations Officer. Ms. Jeannie Poopaw Walker, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Thank you so much. And Chris Henson, are you able to speak?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Excellent. All right, we will go ahead and get started. Thank you all so much for having us here a part of the conversation today. And our Budget and Finance Chair, Ms. Jeannie Poopaw Walker, will kick us off.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Greetings, Vice Mayor Schulman, Chairman Mendez, and honorable council members. On behalf of my board colleagues, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to present our budget today. These are undoubtedly uncertain times. The pandemic has presented all of us with unforeseen challenges, not least for our students, our families, and our schools. We come to you today with a budget that received unanimous approval from our board earlier this week and one that reflects our belief that MNPS must share in the sacrifice that is required at this time. But our central goal is to prioritize our students and what they will need when they return to us in the fall. And once students and educators are back in the classroom, we must be prepared to fund their futures. We spent the early part of this year hosting community meetings across the city to share our goals for the budget and to get feedback. Many of the council members on the line today joined us in those meetings. We heard from parents, staff, and community members that we must prioritize paying our educators well and to provide them with the tools and resources necessary to support student success. Our board has had to make difficult trade-offs in this budget, choosing to prioritize our students by protecting school budgets so that we may continue to focus on instruction and to support our students' developmental needs and social, emotional wellbeing. MNPS currently directs 72% of our funding straight to our schools, giving principals the autonomy and discretion to invest their dollars in staff, programs, and materials that best serve their unique student population. Our budget protects that priority and does not ask principals and schools to make cuts at this time. It is important to note that we have chosen to make $10 million in cuts to our central office and services budget instead of to our schools in order to address inflationary pressures, including increases in water and insurance costs. Our board recognizes that we can be better stewards of funds. And based on multiple years of study and thorough consideration, the board unanimously voted to close four schools this week in order to increase efficiency and better leverage staff, programs, and supports for our students. This was not an easy decision to make, but we understand that these are difficult times. Some have asked us to look at cutting funds that go to charter schools. It's important to note that we recently declined to approve five new charter schools. But we also have a legal obligation to fund existing charters. But we know that their budget allocation will gradually increase as more grades are added to existing charter schools. The budget we bring to you today does not include funds to buy textbooks and materials for our recent English Language Arts adoption for grades K through 12, which is an important priority for our board and our school community. We know this will have a direct impact on student learning. We also believe we must not go backwards. We are bringing you a budget that includes the 3% cost of living increase we gave to staff this year. That increase required an authorization from council to use our fund balance to cover the cost when it became apparent that the original funding mechanism of MDHA funds would not be available. We will honor that increase, but respectfully request that you help us honor the commitment we all made to the teachers of the MNPS by funding the cost of living adjustment that already has gone into effect. So while our board has reached consensus on this budget and its priorities on our students and schools, we recognize that the sacrifices and trade-offs we're making today will still adversely impact our district. Our students will return during a time of great uncertainty. And we all have a collective responsibility to ensure that our schools are ready to welcome them back and support them so that they can return to life. Thank you so much for your time, and I'll pass it back to Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Ms. Poopaw Walker. Greetings, members of the Metro Council and school board members who are able to join us this evening. I'm sorry that the circumstances don't allow us to be in the room so we can see each other and have this important conversation. But I hope that we can make our case for the budget we have prepared. but I hope that we can make our case for the budget we have proposed and answer all of your questions today. If for any reason time doesn't allow us to get to you, please know that you can always call or email us anytime, and we'll try to get you the information you need to make an informed decision as quickly as possible. Many of you already know Mark North, and he will be happy to capture any additional questions and make sure that you get timely responses. The budget we are presenting today is not the budget we'd hoped to present just a few short months ago. We started the budget conversation at the beginning of this year optimistic that we will be able to make critical investments in areas such as employee compensation that will help us retain and recruit great teachers to provide a high-quality education to all students. We wanted to bring to you new investments in textbooks so that every child could have one of their own to help advance their education. We wanted to provide you the opportunity to vote in favor of critical new investments in social, emotional learning and student supports that will help to give our children the help they need to deal with adverse childhood conditions and to advance farther and faster in their academic career. We wanted to help make you partners in the betterment of Metro Nashville Public Schools through these strategic investments, but instead, COVID-19 has forced us all to cut back, to make do with less, and to think about how we can save taxpayer dollars in very uncertain economic times. This fiscal year, we have enacted budget savings and reductions to help deal with a projected revenue shortfall for Metro Nashville and Metro schools. We have frozen hiring, eliminated travel, and severely cut back on all expenditures to the bare essentials to provide those critical services necessary for our students. At the same time, our staff has pushed themselves harder than ever before to provide an education to students in an uncomfortable environment. We appreciate and understand the difficult position that Mayor Cooper and this Metro Council find yourselves in with regards to a budget that maintains a status quo while asking taxpayers to pay significantly more in property taxes next year in the midst of an economic disaster. The budget allocation and the ordinance before you meets the state's requirements for maintenance of effort. However, we find ourselves in a unique situation due to previous commitments made in better economic times. Our budget circumstances require that the flat budget allocation from FY 1920, we have to find $25 million in budget cuts to meet the financial challenges we face. We have found $10 million in cuts in ways that we think will meet the spirit of the mayor's budget proposal, which is to maintain the status quo in services. Our restructuring of central office staff will save an additional $1 million, but in a way that I feel will streamline our reporting structure and provide better lines of communication. We are consolidating multiple under-enrolled schools this year. While I know this is a painful subject for many, I truly believe that it is the best interest of the students served in these clusters and for the district as a whole going forward, so that we can better focus our attention and resources on education and not overhead. Despite our best efforts, there is a $15 million gap between the budget amount offered to us and our needs. That $15 million is from a 3% cost of living adjustment that was enacted in January under a good faith agreement between MNPS and Metro, that those revenues will be replaced in the upcoming budget to maintain our employee pay. I understand why that didn't happen, but nevertheless, if we don't receive that money, it will require some difficult decisions that will likely negatively impact our schools, requiring staff reductions in academics and SCL so that we can maintain a balanced budget. We wanted to give this council an opportunity to work together with Mayor Cooper and with MNPS to find those additional resources so that we can put forth the best foot possible for the upcoming school year for our students and families. I know you're interested in more details, so I'm going to ask Chief Operating Officer Chris Henson to go through our budget for this year, and then, then we can all be ready to answer your questions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Can you hear me okay, everyone?
Yeah, yes.
Great, thank you. The three budget documents that the board approved at a special call meeting on Tuesday, May 19, were submitted to the council office, and I'm under the assumption that you have those. And so I will be touching on highlights relating to all three of those. The first, of course, being our general purpose operating budget. And the one pager that you have in front of you reflects a summary of changes from the current year operating budget. And so, at the top part of the page would be employee compensation items. We have insurance increases for both our certificated employees as well as our support employees. Our certificated employees insurance program is administered by the Employee Insurance Trust, which is made up of three MNEA representatives and three school board representatives, as well as a retired teacher representative. Of course, we pay 75% of the premium, same as metro government, to general government employees. And then our support employee benefits are governed by the Metro Employee Benefit Board. They are treated as metro government employees for benefit purposes. And so, we have approximately $5.5 million in increases for insurance for next year for our employees. That would be the school district or employer, 75% of that premium. We also, as Dr. Battle mentioned, we have included the $15.1 million increase that would be required just to allow us to continue the current year, mid-year 3% cost of living adjustment that was provided to employees, both certificated and support employees back in January. As you remember, this was approved by the council to use the school district's fund balance of approximately $7.5 million to give that mid-year, half-year 3% cost of living adjustment. And so, just to be able to continue to give that, not to provide additional pay increases for next year, but to continue to give that mid-year 3% cost of living adjustment requires additional funding of approximately $15.1 million. We also have other additions, expenditure increases that are required just moving from one year to the next at the same level of service. We have additional costs relating to IT, network upgrades, antivirus contract increases, the R12 support continuation. We also have, have, as we did last year, the continuation of our pre-K program without the grant funding. That federal pre-K expansion grant ended December 31. And so, we budgeted for half a year in the current year budget to continue the funding for those 22 pre-K classrooms. And so, we also would be required for the second part of that fiscal year to include the increase in our operating budget of approximately $1.6 million to continue those pre-K classrooms going forward since the grant ended. We also have a projection of enrollment increase of our English learners from the current year. There is a class size requirement by the Tennessee Department of Education as it relates to English learner students. And so, just to maintain the same level with the increased English learner enrollment would require approximately $1.2 million. We have an increase to our metro IT internal service fee of almost $700,000.
Mr. Henson, Mr. Henson, we're, we're assuming every, all the council members have read this, so you don't have to go line by line if, if you don't want to.
Okay, that, that works for me. I'll just touch on a few others. The metro water rate increase is projected next year at $1.1 million. We have some other increases that I'm happy to discuss if anyone has any questions. We do have, as was discussed, five school closures and consolidations that result in some savings or budget reductions. And then we also have some other items that we are proposing for a one-year move from our operating budget to capital expenditures for those types of expenditures that qualify, as well as Dr. Battle indicating the central office reorganization, which we're projecting budget savings of approximately a million dollars. So that, all in all, equates to a budget of $929.4 million, which is the budget that the Board of Education approved on Tuesday, which reflects a 1.6% increase and would require additional funding of approximately $15 million. And so I'll, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions relating to that particular budget.
Why don't you go ahead and go through the other documents, and we'll get to questions?
Okay. The next budget is our Nutrition Services Fund budget. As you may know, we did continue to pay all staff through the closures that actually began back on March 3, when the tornadoes came through. We went back to school for a few more days and then closed again for the remainder of the year due to the COVID pandemic. The Nutrition Services Fund is intended to be a self-supporting enterprise fund. Typically, the revenues support the expenditures. Of course, with schools being closed since basically March 3, we've had minimal revenue coming in since that time for the last quarter of the school year. And we did continue to pay all Nutrition Services staff. And so, we're projecting to end the current fiscal year with approximately a $5.3 million deficit due to that lack of revenue coming in for the last quarter of the school year. The majority of funding for the Nutrition Services Fund is federal USDA meal reimbursements. There's also revenue for paid meals, a la carte sales, et cetera. The estimated budgeted revenue is approximately $46 million. Within that program, of course, the, the largest source of expenditures would be labor, estimated at $25.1 million. And then, the, the second largest category of expenditures would be, of course, related to food purchases. And so, this is showing revenue and expenditure projections for next year at approximately $46 million. As far as the deficit in that particular fund, we are in a similar boat or situation to most every other school district across the state and across the country where, when schools closed, there was very minimal revenue coming in, but the vast majority of school districts continued to pay staff. And so, we are hopeful that possibly some state CAREs or COVID funding might be available for this purpose, or city CAREs COVID funding to help support this particular program as we continue to provide meals to students and families during the closure. And then the last budget is our Federal Programs and Grants budget. This is all federal pass-through funding that comes from the United States Department of Education to the Tennessee Department of Education and then is distributed to school districts. We are showing the projection of CAREs funding that would come through this Federal Programs and Grants Fund. This $26 million is somewhat misleading because it will be shared with private schools who participate in the program. We don't know exactly what our, what our true allocation will be. There is a state application process involved with applying for these CAREs funds. That application has not been opened yet. It will, I believe it's intended to be open next Tuesday on the 26, and then the state will look at the applications and make determinations hopefully by mid-June and then release the funds. We, we have none of these funds at, at the present time. We'll release those funds by the end of the fiscal year. And so, that's the, the largest change in the Federal Programs and Grants Fund, which is estimated to total just under $120.9 million. So I will stop there and, and see if there are questions.
Sure, let me just ask a couple clarifying ones before I hand it over. So the, the $26 million you just mentioned, where you said it was going to be shared with others, I'm assuming how that gets allocated is not up to MNPS, right? That's somebody else, the state or the federal government that decides that?
That's correct. There was guidance that came from the U.S. Department of Education to states. And, and so then it's up to the state Department of Education and the governor's office to determine how those funds would be distributed. And that guidance has changed somewhat since it, since it first came out. And so, we're, we're still waiting for that guidance and, and waiting for the application process to be opened.
Right. I just wanted to make sure anybody's listening that if any of it goes to private schools, that's going to be the state's call, not MNPS's call or Metro's call, right?
That's correct. The method, the, the method of distribution will be the Tennessee Department of Education and the governor's office. It will be up to them.
All right. Then I will start with Councilmember Bradford.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of quick questions. The first two, I'm just asking if, for some information about the number of employees at central office that make at or above $100,000 annually and the exact number of that salary. Also, what exactly was cut at central office to come up with the $1 million in savings?
I will take the first shot at answering that question. I, I don't have that information, the first question, information off the top of my head. We can, of course, provide that to you. Be happy to. And then, Dr. Battle can speak to the central office reorganization.
Okay. Um, yes, with regards to some of the cuts that have been enacted for the central office reorganization, all of the positions are positions that are at the director level or higher, meaning a director of a program level. So there was a director position, two executive officer positions, four associate superintendent positions, several of the specialized programs from various offices, along with the assistant superintendent.
Okay. And my last question, with the $6.6 million in expected increases to charter schools, was there any pushback from the school district or the school board to these charter operators about that? Because here we are, we're talking about cutting services, closing schools, consolidating on, on the public school side. However, these charter school operators don't seem to be taking the same care and fiscal responsibility that Metro is, and basically extorting us for $6.6 million in growth that we really don't have to give them. So again, was there any pushback or conversations with these charter school operators to say, "Look, Metro doesn't have this money. If you want to grow, you're going to have to wait"?
I will attempt to answer that, and will probably defer to Metro Legal if they are available as well. State law requires that school districts transfer the total state and local revenue per pupil amount for the school district to charter schools based upon their enrollment. Several of our charter schools, through their growth plan, as part of their initial application, continue to add grades each year. And so, this is, this increase is mainly due to the enrollment increases that several of our charter schools will experience due to adding an additional grade. I don't know of any discussions with charter operators as it relates to not continuing to add those particular grades. But again, I will defer to Metro Legal and/or Dr. Battle for, for some further explanation.
I don't think Metro Legal is on, so, but Mr. Cooper, I think John Cooper from the council office has a comment on this.
Okay.
The, the only statute I'm aware of that pertains to negative fiscal impact has to do with new charter schools. When a, an application is filed for a new school, I'm not aware of any such provision in state law that applies to existing charter schools.
Anything else, Councilmember Bradford?
No, just the comment that I believe as, as we across this entire city government are cutting costs and tightening the belt, these schools are, these charter schools are still going forward with pre-planned growth. I really just think it's irresponsible of them to do this to our city. The best I yield.
Thank you. For council members lined up, just to let you know, there's about nine of you with your hands up. So be patient. The next three are Rosenberg, Glover, and Swara. Mr. Rosenberg, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you all for being here. It's great to hear your voice, Dr. Battle, Mr. Henson. Thank you to the vast majority of you who are on the school board. I see there are eight of you here, including my school board member who's called in. Thanks to the vast majority of you who closed the door on opening even more charter schools at the expense of public schools. And I know you had no choice but to consolidate schools. I heard your heartache over it, and I know you had no other options. Nevertheless, I'll just very quickly take the opportunity to congratulate the charter school crowd on achieving their goal of shuttering public schools. I have a few questions, and I know there are other ways to speak, but I think these all call for pretty short answers. So please feel free to give really short ones without feeling like you So, please feel free to get really short ones without feeling like you need to expound, unless you need a... First of all, does the school board's budget include the needed textbooks for ELA?
See, I think that either Ms. Pupo, Walker, or Dr. Battle had mentioned earlier that we do not have any increased expenditures in this budget for textbooks. We do have approximately $3.8 million in the current budget for textbooks, which would not be adequate for the English Language Arts textbook adoption for next year. So, there is no increase in this particular budget for textbooks.
Okay. And I think this was mentioned also, but just to be clear, does the Maintenance of Effort budget that was submitted by the mayor account for the $15 million for the 3% mid-year raise? In other words, is that budget that was submitted based on last year's original budget, or is it $15 million higher to account for the mid-year raise?
Now, there is not an increase for the mid-year 3% COLA. And since the school district's undesignated fund balance was used at mid-year for half year, that $7.5 million, the fund balance doesn't count toward the Maintenance of Effort requirement. The Maintenance of Effort requirement is budgeted local revenue from one year, budgeted local revenue to the next year. And so, since fund balance was used, that was not included in the Maintenance of Effort calculation. And so, there was not any additional funding included in the budget proposal for next year for that mid-year 3% COLA.
Gotcha. Thank you. So, you're already starting at a $15 million deficit on top of the increased expenditures for next year. How do MNPS salaries compare to places like Murfreesboro, Rutherford, and shorter schools? Is there an area of town from whose schools teachers are more frequently poached?
That, I don't know the answer to that question and will possibly defer to Dr. Battle if she might have an answer.
With regards to teacher movement within our schools, when we have a pretty high rate of internal transition each year, with regards to local counties that teachers may move in and out of, I don't have that data in front of me, but you could imagine based upon where our teachers and other employees may live surrounding counties, sometimes we do have shifts for sure. But I don't have exact numbers in front of me. But naturally speaking, when it does come to Rutherford County, Sumner, Williamson County, we do have transition every year with regards to our teaching staff.
Okay. Is there an area of town who were, whose schools were particularly seeing teachers leaving?
No, I think you see it fairly consistent across the district. We will continue to really observe the transition patterns across the district. We do see, you know, it kind of, it differs from year to year, but it's pretty consistent that we have teacher retention data and concerns every year based upon where our teachers land. So, I can't point out a particular point, part of town. Whether it be the south quadrants or the north quadrants, they all deal with their fair share of transition from year to year.
Gotcha. Just a couple quick ones. The compensation study that was just released states that lost salaries, a big part of why teachers leave, it's not the only part. What size role would you say the lack of instructional materials, which comes with the need to constantly seek out and make semi-legal copies, play as just as far as increasing frustration among our educators?
I'll jump in and respond to that. I think that study is right on. We know that compensation is important to all of our employees, but there are other compounding issues that will impact a teacher's decision to remain in the profession or in metro national public schools. So, things like instructional supplies, of course, the culture for learning. We talked a lot about the need for integrating our academics and SCL support, particularly with adverse childhood experiences. So, many different factors really do play into teachers' decisions to stay in the profession or in the district. I think part of the survey and feedback that one of the other committees collected, it also emphasized particularly the instructional supplies and the amount of funds that our educators tend to spend out of pocket to make sure that their students have the necessary resources during their classes. So, all of the above really do impact, and to your point, instructional materials does fall within those categories.
Thanks. I know. For me and other parents on the council, that's a source of frustration for us as well. So, the city, metro government needs to spend its COVID relief funds on things that have to do with recovering from, you know, that are specific COVID-related expenses. So, with the likelihood of an abnormal school year ahead, when we might be more dependent on remote learning, and the fact that classroom sets aren't going to be adequate in such a scenario, and y'all don't have the textbooks we need, doesn't it make sense to use some of metro government's COVID-19 relief funds to purchase the textbooks that will be, that will make it possible for children to continue to learn?
That was a big softball. They want, Dave wants you to say yes.
I think, you know, again, we appreciate the conversations today and any partnership that, or funding that will allow for us to provide the necessary resources for all of our students. I think our board has made it clear around their priorities around compensation, SCL, academic integration, textbooks, instructional supplies for our students and such. And so, to realize that we would definitely be in agreement and will receive positively resources that allow us to do that.
Very nice. That was very diplomatic. I'll say it, we have got to, for our children to be able to have an opportunity to learn next year, classroom sets are not going to do it. So, if we can shift, at least shift what the school board is asking, and we can shift some textbook costs to that COVID fund, maybe we can do what we need to do to retain teachers and ensure our children have the materials that they need next year. Thank you all very much for everything you do. These are, Dr. Battle, you've come in under the most ridiculous circumstances possible between a tornado, schools getting damaged, and then this whole scenario. And thank you for the incredible job you're doing. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Rosenberg. All right. It'll be Councilman Glover, then Swara and Benedict after that. Go ahead, Councilmember Glover. Unmute, please, Councilman. There you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm having to listen to it on my phone. I can't figure out which one I'm...
Can you hear us, Councilman?
I can hear you. Can you not hear me?
We got you now. Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, this is, I'm having to operate off the phone and this new quote computer we got. So, Dr. Battle, what I was going to say is, thank you. It's refreshing because this may be one of the first times that I can remember in a long time that everything that you have spoken of in your comments has been classroom-centered around the children. So, thank you. And I mean that sincerely. I think you know me well enough to know I don't tend to mince my words. So, that means a great deal to me. See, the second thing that I'm going to say, I'm going to just take a very quick point with Mr. Henson. Mr. Henson, it feels like we're 12 years ago when we went through the economic downturn here in the city. This one, however, I don't know if we understand exactly what this curve is going to look like and how we come back out. So, and with that, what, the reason I bring that up is because what I warned of before is what I continue to warn of, what I've said ultimately and over and over, anytime we reach into reserve funds to do things that we probably shouldn't be doing out of reserve funds, it gets us in trouble, and here we are with a $15 million problem. Because it was, and I came out and criticized it. I think I was the only one who criticized it, but it scared me and obviously for a logical reason. Last night, I guess this is going to be to Dr. Battle, last night I saw a news report that 100 teachers may be laid off due to the budget restrictions. Do we have a loss of students? Or, I mean, how are we justifying letting 100 teachers go? Or what, I mean, how do we reach that conclusion, if I may ask?
Thank you for that question, Councilman Glover. And I think there was some confusion about that communication that went out. The communication that was shared last evening was relevant to one email that was sent out by one principal at a particular school. And so, I think some of the communications have been confused around where we are. Our current process right now, as everyone likely remembers, is that we use a student-based budgeting process with all of our schools. So, we push the majority of our funds down directly to schools so that they can program and make the decisions regarding their staffing and school-level resources. With that process, every year, we do have spaces where some of our teachers are non-renewed, meaning that there's a program change within their school. And in most cases, if they're tenured teachers, they're guaranteed a position within the district. If they're not tenured, then we work closely with them to try to have them placed. And so, the communications that have gone out have not been a direct impact of the budget shortfall because we've not touched our school budgets to date. They are really relevant to program changes in schools and/or enrollment. And so, with that, every year, fund shifts, program needs shift, and then we match our teaching staff accordingly. So, I just, I'm glad you asked that question so we have an opportunity to clarify that because that particular article referenced a communication from one principal that went out to their staff, communicating the changes that would be happening on their campus and did not impact 100 staff members. Total across the district, we have about approximately 100 teachers in that scenario with tenured teachers all guaranteed placements within the district. So, there were not a direct impact of any budget cuts, but only shifting regarding program needs and enrollment, whether there was an increase or decrease at the school level.
Okay. So, the district-wide, are you still saying that there would be 100 teachers that more than likely would have to be laid off because, is it because of a drop in student enrollment?
So, not laid off, they may be shifting schools.
Okay. So, the thing that happens every year, in other words?
Absolutely. This happens every year. So, if enrollment drops by 100 students, and rightly so, the teachers shift to where enrollment has grown. But in most...
Yeah. You go, you have to move from point A to point B, but you still have your job. And so, that was, that was the part that was confusing me because I was like, wow, did we lose that many students, which I'd not heard that. So, thank you for that clarification.
You're more than welcome.
Second of all, now I want to move outside of the classroom, if I may. And it really had to do with the 100 teachers, but I'm going to go ahead and stay in this vein as we try to figure out how we try to not hit the reserve funds or any other things because frankly, I think our reserve funds are far too thin to do the things like that that we shouldn't be doing. That being said, outside of the classroom, where are you on the contract services that you had specifically with custodians? I know there was talk of bringing it back in-house and hiring everyone, or, you know, where is that and what's been the progress in that arena?
I'll be happy, Councilman Glover, I'll be happy to speak to that. We did have an RFP process where the board awarded two contracts for custodial services and one contract for grounds services. Through that RFP process, we were able to save approximately $500,000 net. The custodial contracts between the two contractors, there was approximately $900,000 savings. The grounds contract increased by around $400,000, giving us that net $500,000 savings. So, those contracts are ready to go and to be in place for next year, and the net savings through that process again is $500,000.
And so, Mr. Henson, the contracts that have been awarded, did we end up retaining the same companies? Did we change? And if we changed, what is the individuals who were employed with those companies, have they had the same option they had, or well, that was given years and years ago when we first went to the outside contracting positions?
So, we, what we did was when we were going through the RFP process, we split the school district into six zones to match up with our six maintenance zones that we have. And it so happened that the incumbent contractor was the best price on three of those zones, and then a new contractor was best on the other three zones. And so, we've split the contract into basically into half going to one contractor and half going to the other. As you mentioned, the incumbent contractor does still employ a sizable number of legacy MNPS employees where they had hired those employees, maintained their same pay rate and benefits, et cetera. And so, those employees still remain with that incumbent contractor and continue to be sort of grandfathered in as they were originally.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, the, and this will be my final question, Chair, and I will let everyone else speak because I think this will kind of clean it up for me, and then from there I can reach out to either Dr. Battle or Mr. Henson if I have your permission to do that, please. So, my final question is this, outside of the grounds and the custodial, have you looked at other areas that could be utilized for contracting in order to push more money into the classroom, to buy the textbooks, to do those things, to make sure we stay centric with the classroom, push every penny possible and every dollar that could be saved to do the things inside of the classroom? How diligent have you been in those arenas to look at potential of creating revenue to buy the things for the students?
I'll attempt to answer that question, and then, of course, Dr. Battle can jump in if she would like. But we look at it if it's an area where we feel like there can be some cost savings generated and still provide the service level that we need, particularly if it's a short-term type of service. What comes to mind would be in our IT department, sometimes it makes more sense to contract out certain services for things. Just as an example, we're, we have been installing new ceiling projectors in schools that we contract that installation, et cetera, out rather than having our own people do that kind of work. I know that in some of our exceptional education areas, it's difficult to find some of the personnel that we need. And so, to be able to meet that service requirement for our students, there are times where we'll contract that out for such things as occupational therapy and physical therapy and things of that nature relating to student services. Those are the two areas that come to mind. And anytime that we feel like there's the opportunity where we can be more efficient and effective by doing that, then we try to look at that. But those are the two areas that come to mind off the top of my head.
And I thought I will add to that is that it's an ongoing process. That is, that is an area that, whether that be reducing contracts or shifting to contracts for efficiencies and savings, that's an ongoing conversation and process that our team engages with throughout the entire school year and definitely during the budgeting process.
Okay. Well, with that, Dr. Battle, I would enjoy having a deeper conversation on that, especially given the economy of where we are now. Chair, thank you very much. Dr. Battle, Mr. Henson, to the board, thank you very much for indulging the questions. And I hope we get schools open back up. I actually have a grandson starting this year that is trying to figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Next three are Councilmembers Swara, Benedict, and Cash. Councilmember Swara, you're up.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good. Thank you. I want to echo whatever you're saying, Dr. Battle, and everyone, thank you for a great job. I want to particularly commend you on the food program during the termido and all the, during the COVID for the students. I think, but I think that we have a lot of children that eat food in school and be able to think about things to... things through an equity lens. I think that's really important. Also, the idea of giving computers to students, knowing that a lot of students don't have that, I think these are good ideas, and I'm very much appreciative of that. One of the things that I wanted to talk about was on the textbooks, and I'm glad that Councilmember Rosenberg dealt with that in detail. I think we have to make sure that we have all the tools for our children to learn. So I have two more questions for Dr. Battle and then one for Mr. Henson. So, starting with the computer question, as we're giving out computers, are we making sure that there is internet or Wi-Fi for the children to use it? Because it's actually redundant if we give a computer and the children are unable to reach it. And what we're finding now with COVID is that there's a lot of studies with minority groups in terms of access to textbook, no internet, a gap, and fun for that. That's my first question to Dr. Battle.
Yes, certainly. We, I do agree that part of what we're trying to address here is getting devices in the hands of students as well as the access, the internet access that they need to engage, particularly in remote learning currently and with future plans as we move forward. Our initial response was that we shared all of the free resources to our families. We gave them out as we were giving out devices. We shared them on our website. We pushed them out via other communications to make sure that every family was aware and could connect once they obtained their devices. Moving forward, that is an ongoing conversation. We have our team in-house, and we're working with external partners and looking at how we can ensure connectivity for our students as we're moving forward through the summer and through the fall. As you probably have heard, we've launched our summer virtual learning program as of today, and we know we want to keep our students engaged in their devices and connectivity. That is going to be an ongoing conversations and partnership with several of the providers as well as priority as we're looking at our CARES funding and other buckets of funding that may be available to us as we build out our plan.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My other question is, who pays employees? There's a lot of people that make less than $100,000 in Metro, and a lot of them work only during the school year. I want to know, as we're looking at salaries, I support teachers' salaries, I think teachers should be paid, and they deserve everything they get. But I wanted to make sure that as we're looking at teachers' pay, that we're looking at the support staff as well. So my question is, is there any plan or is there been any review of that lately, or is that part of the budget right now or not?
So, go ahead. Go ahead, Chris, I can echo after you speak.
Okay. I apologize. What I will say is, I know that as part of last year's budget discussions, as well as this year's budget discussions, there was strong interest in looking at making a minimum pay rate for school district employees at $15 per hour. We know that that was given last year to Metro General Government employees, but was not funded for Metro Schools employees. And so that was something that we were, we have been discussing. We would, of course, we would very much like to be able to set that $15 per hour minimum to be at the same level as Metro Government employees. I believe the last estimated cost on that that I saw was somewhere in the neighborhood of $4.9 million is what it would take to move all of our support employees up to that minimum of $15 per hour. It affects a large number of our employees. So that was what I was going to say, Dr. Battle. You may, we're getting ready to say something else.
No, I think you answered that question. Thank you.
Anything else, councilmember? Go ahead.
I have one last question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we talked about department savings, and in there, it says the COVID and the tornado and the fact that schools are to close, that the school board is expecting a $52 million savings at the end of FY '20. My question is, has that $52 million been factored into the FY '21 budget? Or can it be used for any of the things that we're talking about? Has it been completed or not?
Sure. I'll attempt to answer that question. We were, as you said, we were asked to identify any budget savings or budget reductions in the current year FY '20 budget that we would have. And we were able to identify at that particular time approximately $52 million in expenditure savings, basically because, as you indicated, schools were closed, and so we implemented a spending freeze, travel freeze, hiring freeze, et cetera. And so we were able to identify an estimated $15 million in savings. That was intended to be used to attempt to offset the shortfall in local revenue that we are also seeing at the same time. And so the reduction in revenues that were identified, again, they were identified so that we could see how we might end the fiscal year, knowing that local revenue, particularly local option sales tax revenue, there was going to be a significant shortfall for FY ' '20.
There's always the Q and- Could you repeat that, councilmember?
The challenge is, we did not spend it.
At least in the chamber, the connection is smudged. Mr. Henson, did you hear that?
I did not. Could you repeat it if you heard it?
I did not. Councilmember Swara, I think your connection is-
Yes.
Go ahead.
The next one is that.
Councilmember Swara, let's give it one more try. Go ahead.
Whatever challenges- I can hear you fine. I don't know why they can't hear you, but we can hear you fine.
So, if you can hear me, if you can repeat what I said, whoever can hear me. So, we say $52 million because we have closed schools in FY '20. Now, $52 million is money that was not spent and should be used in FY '21. Have we factored that into the budget or not? Because we did not spend it. So if it's there to be spent, is the difference between what we budgeted and the actual that happened? So has that been factored into any of these numbers?
I will attempt to answer that question and then defer to Metro Finance if they are available. Yes, the $52 million would be savings that would reduce our total expenditures for the current fiscal year, but we also have significant, a significant shortfall in local revenue collections. And so as far as the end of the year, I know that Metro Finance has made some preliminary estimates of what the school district's fund balance might look like at the end of the fiscal year. And so the funding would not be available to use because the revenue shortfall that we are experiencing would basically take all of that savings so that we would end the year hopefully in a positive situation. But again, I'm happy to defer to Metro Finance if they are available.
We're not going to take-
Kim McDonnell at Metro Finance, Chris Henson is right about that. The savings would, you know, hopefully cover the revenue shortfall that we're projecting, which is, which is over $50 million for schools.
All right. Thanks, councilmember. We've got seven more councilmembers in the queue. The next three are Benedict, Cash, and Tooms. Councilmember Benedict, you're up.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, folks, for being with us today. Councilmember Rosenberg and Councilwoman Swara covered many of my questions, specifically about teachers' pay and textbooks and making sure that every child has the opportunity to get a world-class education, which really is a basic function of our government and a basic expectation, in my opinion, for our taxpayers for what their dollars that they give us should go towards. But just a couple of questions. First, I want to circle back to charter schools. What level of scrutiny and accountability do we hold them? And how is it different from what we hold to our own non-charter schools?
And before MNPS answers that question, let's try to keep that to the operating budget impact of accountability, not the broader topic, please.
That's correct. Thank you.
I'll begin and then defer to Dr. Battle, but from a budgetary standpoint, as I mentioned, there is state law that requires school districts to transfer the total state and local revenue per pupil amount to charter schools based upon their enrollment. And then charter schools are basically independent, even though they're a part of the school system, they have their own independent board. And charter schools with their board determine how they are going to spend those funds. But as far as our end goes, we just follow state law and transfer the per pupil amount to the charters based upon their enrollment, and we adjust the payments based upon adjustments in vacillating enrollment as well as changes in any state and local revenue. I don't know if, Dr. Battle, if you have anything you wanted to add in that respect?
Not in addition to, but just echoing again, you know, the requirement of us to follow state law, but also, as Chris has mentioned, we make the necessary adjustments when things, when the circumstances, if you're declining enrollment, if for any reason a charter school closes, we make the necessary adjustments with regards to the budget, given those factors.
Thank you for that. And that leads to my next question, which is, how often does that change? So when they transfer a child out to our school or vice versa, does that funding change on a monthly basis, an immediate basis, or is that only part of the annual budget?
State law dictates when those changes can occur, and so the first payment is made in August, and so it's based upon student projections. And then, once we get into October and we know what actual enrollment are, then we make proper adjustments to the payments retroactively to the charter schools. We also have another opportunity, I believe, in February to make another change, again, retroactive back to the beginning of the year. And then the, at the end of the year, once we know what our total state and local revenue actually is, which typically would not occur until August, then we would make the final reconciliation with our charters as it relates to their payment amounts, taking into consideration any changes that they have in enrollment. Enrollment is reported to the Tennessee Department of Education nine times throughout the year. And so we monitor that enrollment each time the enrollment is submitted to us, and then we submit it to the Tennessee Department of Education. So there are multiple opportunities within the fiscal year to adjust and reconcile those payments to the charters based upon changes in enrollment and changes in state and local revenue.
Thank you for that. So one more follow-up on charters, and then I want to move on to a different topic, which is, going back to that accountability piece, they're getting taxpayer dollars, and just as I can say to you, what have you used that $1 for? And you tell me. When I give them a dollar, I want to see their P and L. What rights do we have and what rights do you have to have them open up their books and show us where those dollars are being spent so that then we can determine, should we be spending our dollars differently based on the results? Do we have that level of accountability? And if that's managed by the state, let's just say that and move on.
I will try to answer. We have a charter office that monitors all of our charter schools. We currently have 28 charter schools. I know they monitor the financials of all of the charters. They require audited financial statements from each charter. I don't know that they get down into the detail of exactly what charters spend their dollars on, but I know that that is part of their function is to monitor the charters. But of course, charters, as I mentioned, do operate independently of the school district with their own separate board. And I don't know, Dr. Battle, if you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Nothing in addition for answering. Sorry about that, Dr. Battle. Thank you. So we just received the teacher pay study, which Councilmember Rosenberg referenced earlier, and it's very good, and it confirms exactly what I think almost every Nashvillian knows, which is that we have a lot to do in order to pay our teachers commensurately for the work that they do for us. I'm committed to finding ways to improve teacher pay and resources, and not just teacher, but staff pay as well. In addition to the funding, I trust that you also agree that we must look for all the low-hanging fruit that are going to improve our financial position. So similar to the teacher pay study, I want to focus on the administrative salaries and costs within the administration that are not direct student interaction. What studies have been done about our administrative costs?
I'm not aware of any, I'm sorry, I'm not aware of any formal studies that have been done. I know that there have been, over the years, there have been comparisons with similar districts, peer districts, as far as position costs, et cetera, but I don't know of any formal studies that have been done.
Okay. And so do we have any indication about how our salaries compare to our peers?
I think our human resources department does, basically through the, through those methods that I just mentioned, looking at peer districts. We have a number of peer districts throughout the country of similar size, et cetera, that we benchmark a number of data points against, and some of that is related to salaries.
I think that would be really helpful for us to have, if you could have your HR folks send that over to the council office via John Cooper, J O N Cooper, if you would, please. Is that all right?
Sure. Yes, I will. Mark North will see what Human Resources has and happy to get that to you.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. So, last question is, what are the inequities that you could quickly improve if we were able to not only bridge the $15 million budget gap, but also perhaps give you another $15 million? How could that directly go to students and what would it be used to do?
I'm happy to respond to that question. And, Mr. Bullock, you might want to jump in. Earlier this year, as a part of our board's planning process, we've had many of these discussions and been very intentional around the resources and needs for our districts, particularly in relation to equity. Some of those priorities that have been a part of our conversations and planning all along have been around SCL and academic integration. That was the second priority for our school board, to make sure that we can provide the necessary training and resources to support our students, both academically and with their social-emotional learning. As what has already been mentioned, as has already been mentioned, instructional materials and textbooks, also support for our schools of innovation, pre-K, community, and parent engagement, as well as our HR and IT infrastructure, which is critical to our remote learning plan. So those are a few areas that our school board has prioritized that would get at some of those issues regarding equity and quite frankly, elevating our ability to provide a high-quality education to all of our MNPS students.
I'm glad you have an answer ready for that because I'd love to get you that extra $15 million. So that's it for me. I just want to thank you all. Dr. Battle, you are very popular in the city. You are doing great work, and I appreciate all that you're doing to improve the lives of Nashvillians. I truly am in awe of all the results your dedicated employees, from teachers to janitors, that they're able to provide our young kids and even beyond that in the community. So thank you all for being here with us and for your continued good work.
Thanks, councilmember. Next three are Cash, Tooms, and Virture. Councilman Cash, you're up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, I just want to start off by saying that I appreciate the sacrifices in this budget- Yeah, I just want to start off by saying that I appreciate the sacrifices in this budget that are necessitated by these unique times, that you all are keeping the commitment to teacher pay. I really want us to bridge that gap and make sure that we can attract and retain the best teachers for our kids. And I just also want to add that, Dr. Battle, I echo some of what Councilmember Renadick said, and others, that I think you've set an excellent tone for this entire school year, and including the last few very trying months. So I kind of want to delve into, I got several questions about both charter schools and central office and administrative staffing. So, as charter schools have served more students over the last decade, and I'm kind of asking you about the thinking this year, setting this year's budget. So, as we've seen, you know, charters are one of the reasons that we lose enrollments, and we hear that, and I agree with it, that it's taking money from metro schools. So in that process, either this year or even longer-term thinking than that, how do you all kind of adjust resources to make sure that the brunt of lost revenues doesn't adversely impact schools? You know, and I ask this, knowing that yesterday, or two days ago, y'all made a really tough choice to close some schools. So, do you watch to see that the lost funds from charter schools are equally balanced, that the resources are scaled in central office in relation to the school enrollment? Does that make sense?
Thank you, Councilman, and I'll try to answer that. As you said, of course, the board has, the school board has voted to close and consolidate five schools for next year. What we do is, as Dr. Battle mentioned, is we use a weighted student funding formula called student-based budgeting. The vast, the largest driver of that would be enrollment, and then there are additional weights added on for the different types of needs that some students may have, such as an English learner student, or a student in poverty, or exceptional education, special needs student. And so, when a school loses enrollment, then their student-based budget will go down, because they have fewer students to educate. And then likewise, on the other side, charter schools, when they increase their enrollment, then based upon the state-required calculation, they receive additional funding for that increased enrollment. What the district has would be a number of fixed costs, where if you have a handful of students that leave one particular school and go to a charter school, there really isn't much in terms of savings at that sending school. The school still has a principal, the school still has the same utilities, the school still has a PE teacher, et cetera, et cetera. And so there's not much in saving from the district school that is sending five or six students to a charter school. Yet the charter school is picking up the full per pupil amount of the school district's entire operating budget, because it's the total state and local revenue per student. And so that's where the cost difference occurs, when some students go to a charter school. The funding follows the students, but the costs don't necessarily do. And so, that's basically, in a nutshell, the difference.
Right, and so I guess I'm asking, those, like a portion of the per pupil funding helps fund central office. So I guess, the school has to make adjustments, and I know that there are some fixed costs and some that are based on enrollment, but I guess the central office also adjusts to those declining revenues?
Yes, we have what are called centralized services, that those would be the funds that aren't sent directly out to schools, and they are for things like transportation, utilities, the district pays all utilities for all schools, we don't require them to budget for their own utilities. Transportation, I mentioned, maintenance, custodial and grounds, textbooks, a number of those kinds of things are called, considered centralized services, because they're not sent out directly to schools due to economies of scale and other factors. And so they aren't necessarily able to be reduced, just because there are some students that leave district-run schools for a charter school. But yes, we do look at reductions whenever we can, if we do experience an enrollment decline. What we've experienced, by and large, over the last number of years, has been that the charter enrollment has increased, but in many years, except for one year that was an anomaly, in many years, the district enrollment has either held steady or increased as well. And so there's not necessarily been a lot of opportunity to reduce those centralized services costs.
And Councilman, if you'd like me jumping in here, first of all, from one educator to another, thank you for all of your previous and current support of our students as early as yesterday. Thank you for your support, and I always welcome you back. But to Chris's point, we're always looking at some of those cuts, and to emphasize that, part of what we did in this budget process was look at central office. As we mentioned in our opening remarks, and as Chris went through the budget, we have identified about a million dollars in cuts from central office this year. And I don't say that to suggest that it's easy to do, or that there won't be impact behind it, but to your question, really prioritize our schools and pushing resources into classrooms for students. And so based upon some of the shifting and adjustment, we've identified some cuts at central office that, you know, and our goal is for any central service to really touch our students, but as we're looking for these efficiencies during this difficult budget time, it was necessary for us to do this to protect our school budgets, to protect our students and our classrooms to the best of our ability. So I just wanted to echo that, and hopefully to the sentiment of what your question is. We continue to do that, and we'll continue to look for those efficiencies, given our central service needs across the district.
Thanks, and that helps. Kind of on the same lines, and you've kind of already answered some of this, I know that many folks do like want to make sure that the, that you all are making sure that as much money gets to the classroom as possible, and I can see that you're trying hard to do that. Typically, and I think I did earlier, and in past years I've heard this, that when we talk about central office staffing, a quick metric that's shared is like comparison to other like-sized systems. Are there any other metrics that you use, like in terms of, like, I know that you all do tons of surveys, like the climate surveys, and I think I got one, a new one just the other day, especially like when you're getting from teachers and principals and school staff, does that data help inform what programs and departments at central office are being, are perceived as, by stakeholders, as the most effective? And you kind of use that data in adjusting, either adding to or taking from central office staff?
I'll jump in here. Part of a process, one of the processes that has recently started is around priority-based budgeting for our district dollars. And part of that process is really looking at return on investment, in where we're investing and the outcomes that we're giving from our students, and from our schools, and in our teacher performance. So we are using metrics of that nature to make informed decisions regarding our priorities and where we invest. Of course, it is imperative, as you mentioned, that we continue to survey and get feedback. We always are utilizing that, soft data as well, to help inform decisions as we're moving forward. And as you mentioned, that's why we're currently in the process of getting additional information back from our families, and hopefully we'll continue the type of feedback gathering that we're currently demonstrating right now as we're closing out the end of the school year.
Awesome. One more, like, quick question or two. Instructional coaches has been in the last decade, like, an increased expenditure, and I know in some cases they're very effective, in some cases, I feel like the schools don't feel that they are. Are you leaving instructional coaches, like literacy and math, are you leaving that at the same level from last school year, or making adjustments there?
We actually made an adjustment this year with regards to our student-based budgeting. Our principals and school leadership teams typically budget for a few non-negotiables requirements that either by state law or district expectation must exist on every campus. This year, we did make a change with the requirement around instructional coaches, giving our school leaders an opportunity to make informed decisions based upon the needs, the unique needs of their students, and the goals that they have before them. So we did provide some flexibility for this year's budgeting process for schools, for school-based instructional.
By that, you mean they could choose not to, they could replace an instructional coach with a classroom teacher if they felt they had the need for that?
Absolutely.
All right, that's, I think that's a great move, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you, that's all for me.
Thanks. Next three are Councilmembers Tooms, Virture, and Hall. Councilmember Tooms, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Most of my questions have actually already been asked and answered, but I do still have a few, and my questions are particular to the recent school consolidation. My district too is greatly impacted by the consolidation of those schools, and so have some questions related to that. One is, how did you calculate the $3.4 million in savings? And is that $3.4 million what's left over after the additional resources are allocated to the consolidated schools? Because part of the justification for consolidating the schools was that the consolidation would allow for additional resources to be put into the resulting schools? And what are those additional resources?
I'll jump in and attempt to answer it first, and then defer to Dr. Battle. As far as the calculation of the savings, what we did was looked at the students that would be rezoned to the new consolidated school, and recalculated that school's student-based budget based upon the weighted student funding. And of course, the more enrollment, the more funding would come along to the school. So that's how we, that's how we calculated the actual savings amount for each school closing and consolidation. And of course, the larger the school, then you have a number of fixed costs for the school, like a principal, and a counselor, and a librarian. If you have more students at that school, then the costs for those positions are spread over more students, resulting in more available funding for the other needs of the school. I'll defer to Dr. Battle for any other information she would like to share.
Yes, Chris, thank you for that, and that was the exact same way that I would have explained it, given the transition of students and enrollment, and the additional purchasing power that will provide for the consolidated schools. Also with, part of this consolidation work is the reimagined work in how we're articulating our goals and new branded and strengthened pathways for students, to set them up on success from their pre-K through 12 experience. With regards to resources, I just want to remind you that our schools utilize student-based budgeting. And while we will definitely share the data, coach our school principals and leadership teams, part of that SDB process is empowering that community, that learning community, on identifying the resources, unique resources, in a lot of cases that are needed to support the students. And so that is a collaborative process with the school team, with parents, and the community to identify with the new purchasing power, what are those resources that need to be available to support students, regardless if they're transitioning, or if we're thinking about the instructional approach that the school will take year after year.
So with the newly consolidated schools having more students, that creates a bigger pot of money for those schools to work with? Am I understanding that right?
That is correct, and to the tone of this, as we're making these determinations and looking at our limited dollars, we want to be very cognizant of ensuring that less of the money is going towards overhead, and more of the money is going towards supporting students. And so, as we embark upon some of these difficult decisions, which I think anybody would probably not want to have to make, but as we're, as we're looking at that, we're really considering what that purchasing power is, and how we can ensure that the majority or the most of those dollars truly touch our students. And we know that, you know, first and foremost, is having a quality teacher in front of every student, but with that, teachers need to be equipped with the right resources and supports to support and really engage every single child that they're serving.
Okay, and so that $3.4 million in savings is from the fixed costs that are related to the closed schools?
That's correct, and in many of these, in many of these situations, a lot of the staffing will follow the student. So if there is a need for 25 teachers, there will be 25, if not more, teachers if the school team decides that they want to utilize their funding to reduce class size, or provide additional specialized courses for students to meet their school goals. But yes, you are correct with regard to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember?
That's it, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Next three are Councilmembers Virture, Hall, Gamble. So Councilmember Virture, your turn.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Battle, Chris Henson, and school board members. My question is, is this, knowing the revenue shortfalls in the city, and from our budget hearings and in past years and so forth, and rightly so, MMPS is the only entity that's coming in asking for this council to find money. And many of us know that we don't find money. We're either taking money from other critical services, or making choices to reduce down staff across metro. My question is, why wasn't a budget presented to this body that included what that $15 million cut would be, what that plan would be, to help this body to be able to help you? Right now, the budget presented, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't help us in trying to, in trying to help you meet your budgetary need, because it really doesn't have a plan dollar for dollar. As council members, we have more needs of focus than just the school district, unlike school board members. We have to make sure that we're meeting the demand for services, for police, for fire, for our metro employees. Why wasn't there an alternative budget discussed? Because the reality of it is, is that Mayor Cooper's budget may pass. I don't know if that was part of the consideration, with the deliberation with yourself and the board. I'm just really concerned with the dynamic, and I, my experience with three directors of schools, is that this is a first for me, where the director of schools has come before the body, asking us to find the $15 million versus them working with the parameters, and then allowing the council to do what we do on our end.
This is Jeanie Bullock, I'll jump in. So, I will say that every year we've asked for more money than we have been offered by the mayor's office, no matter who the mayor was. But we debated a budget that was the mayor's request at 9:14 on Tuesday, and we also debated the budget we're putting before you. But I want everybody to know, we're not asking for anything new, we're not asking for anything additional, we're asking to be simply funded, having our teachers' pay stay the same, we're not raising salaries, we're not doing anything new, we're simply asking to have the allocation reflect the budget we had this year. And so, I will say that it does, I totally recognize that there are many metro departments that need to be funded, and that are critically important to our city. I think more than ever, people are recognizing the unique role that schools play for many, many reasons in our community. And I just think we're going to have, if we have to go ahead and absorb the $15 million, it will mean cuts in staffing at schools, and we just believe that our kids are going to come back and need... to come back and need all hands on deck on their return from this time. And so, again, I don't think we're asking for anything new, and this was a process that we discussed, a decision we discussed just this week.
Thank you for that response, but again, we don't, Chair, this is my ask, we need this district, the school board, to bring us a plan, what those cuts look like, so we're not talking, she just said cuts, we don't know what that, what that means. Also, I'm asking for them to identify anyone making $100,000 across the board for a 10% cut, anyone making $150,000 and above for a 20% cut, anyone making $200 and above for a 30% cut, what that, what those savings would actually be. But for this body, if we're going to make sound budgetary decisions for the district, we need to know what $15 million in cuts look like, and what that impact is.
Councilmember-
It's a shared, it's a shared responsibility, we will have to go ask every school and every department to cut 2% or 3% off. And to be frank, cutting the salaries, because there aren't that many people that make that much money, we would still have a very long way to go to get to $15 million. So, it would be a shared responsibility.
Councilmember-
Chair, this is my last request.
Sure.
Also, we need to know what was considered to reach that $15 million benchmark.
That is the amount of the 3% COLA that we gave to teachers this year.
Yeah, I understand that, Chair, that would be my request, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember, can I, I'll give you one or two choices, you can pick either one, to make sure we get all those requests. Option 1 is that you type them into the Q&amp;A section of the WebEx, and option 2 is to have Ms. Culver from the council office reach out to you to make sure we get them with precision. Would you prefer to type it into WebEx, or have the council office reach out to you?
I'll do it through the council office, Chair.
All right, thanks very much, appreciate it. All right, so I've got four people left in the queue, and I'm going to, I'm going to cut it off at the four people. It's Hall, Gamble, Porterfield, and Johnston, and so those will be the last four. Councilmember Hall, you're up.
Thank you Chair, thank you Dr. Battle and MMPS staff. Again, we know the burden that you guys bear, we recognize that uniquely, and positions that we hold, and the responsibilities that come with that. I've got just a few short questions. First and foremost, could someone please define for me what exactly a priority school is?
Priority schools, as you called it, the innovation, there are schools that have been designated as performing in the bottom 5% in the state of Tennessee.
Okay, my second question would be then, we can see in previous and in the current budget, line items specifically, money geared toward different departments, different programs, even specific allocations for charter schools, but why is there no line item documentation for how we're going to address specifically priority schools? Reason being is that in these consolidations and closings, we're seeing schools that were deemed as priority schools, that we've been told in previous years were a priority, but have never seen an actual line item budgetary allocation or plan for the, improving those And it matters in a variety of ways, none more significant than we're talking about consolidating and closing priority schools that we've not seen an improvement or a successful plan be advanced to improve before closing.
Chris, do you want to respond first, or do you want me to jump in?
Sure, I'll attempt to respond first. The supplemental funding that priority schools have received are typically federal and state grants that are available for schools of innovation or priority schools, and so they're outside of the operating budget, typically coming through the Tennessee Department of Education. And so, that grant funding has been supplemental and additional funding to those schools, in addition to the additional funding that schools, those schools receive through the weighted student funding formula, where we have additional weights for students in poverty, students that are not academically performing, and those kinds of things. So, the higher needs the school has, the more funding per student that those schools receive, but the vast amount of additional and supplemental funding that has been going to our schools of innovation, they've come from state and federal grant funding, typically called SIG funding. Dr. Battle?
Yeah, those are called schooling improvement grants, and they are not reflected in our operating budget, but to Chris's point, if you look at a breakdown of our per people allocation through our SVB, our priority schools actually receive the highest weighting, given the weights that go into the SVB formula. In addition to that, you know, and again, commending our school board here, one of our priorities originally going into our budget building process this year was to keep our schools of innovation as a continued top priority for our district, and in funding and in resources. In addition to that, we also have Dr. Sharon Griffin, who has come on board to really support our priority schools, and for those of you who are familiar or not familiar with Dr. Griffin's work, she is very well-known, is probably one of the only turnaround specialists within the state of Tennessee, and she's been very successful with her work down in Shelby County, and has also worked with the state. And so, we have really leaned on her expertise in obtaining those additional funds for our schools, and also maintaining the weights within our student-based budgeting to ensure that the weighting is increased to support students that are in those schools. With regards to the consolidation, part of the challenge there is also enrollment, so it's important for us to understand that the enrollment does have an impact on the final allocation that goes towards those schools.
And I'm glad you mentioned that there at the end, because that was specifically what I was alluding to, because the primary factor in those schools, being priority schools, and now being consolidated, was enrollment. Priority schools, enrollment was low because they were priority schools, and not being successfully turned around, or attempted to be turned around. And so, those schools, having been priority schools for an extended period of time, led to a massive decline in enrollment, so we're kind of doing the chicken and the egg there. That's why we're asking specifically what plans have been advanced, or could be advanced as an option, to look at turning around and repairing those schools as we were told they would be, because it was causing the decline in enrollment prior to consolidating. Really quickly, because I know we've got a few more, and we've got to wrap up, but saying that same thing, with enrollment, the schools that are being consolidated have very low enrollment, but the enrollment at those consolidated schools is still much higher than the enrollment at White Creek High School. Is White Creek High School being considered to be closed or consolidated with something else in the next couple of cycles? And I ask that because these are also feeder schools that feed into that hype.
Yes, we are very much aware of the feeder pattern for White Creek High School, and if I can, and I'm going to tie this back to our operating budget, and how we're utilizing our resources to support our students. But part of this original plan was failed within our metro schools reimagined, with, which really was getting at the goal of strengthening our pathways, and accelerating outcomes for our students, both academically and with regards to their social emotional learning. So, this is a cluster plan that does feed into White Creek High School, but again, provides additional support, resources, and programming to support those students. The consolidation was only a component of that plan, as we looked at how we can maximize the resources, the successes and opportunities that do truly exist in these spaces, and how we can stretch those dollars to the best of our ability to provide more for our students. So, there is a plan, this whole conversation started with the plan around what was going to change, what needed to change, in our academic planning and execution, our instructional planning on behalf of all of our students. And with that came additional conversations around how we can maximize our learning environment to reduce the cost of overhead, and to get our dollars and resources as close to students as possible. In this particular case with the White Creek Cluster, the plan currently is around increasing our advanced academic opportunities, and potentially looking at an early college and senior pathway experience in all the White Creek schools. And so, this pathway will provide those opportunities from students starting as early as pre-K, all the way through high school, hopefully graduating with both a high school diploma and an associate's degree. So, that was the academic planning that was shared from the very beginning. And again, the second phase of that work was looking at really maximizing and optimizing our learning environments and learning spaces for students.
Okay, thank you. And my very last question would be, really quickly, now that we are living in a COVID world, the question is, what special circumstances or things are being put in place as we look to move toward closing and consolidating these schools, considering also the fact that not only are these children going to be more susceptible to the virus, but they're coming from communities that are already minority and rural disproportionately impacted I guess that would speak more to what things are specifically being put in place to account for what we're asking to put those kids into, and taking into account where they're coming from. Since we're in the COVID era and discussing how we're going to do distance learning, provide particular materials, things of that nature, are there special steps being taken place to consider what's happening with those schools, and where those children are coming from?
Absolutely, I'll take this question, team, if you don't mind. Yes, we have specific teams geared towards our metro schools reimagined plan, and particularly in the consolidation scenarios, we have entire teams that engage every school, and school leadership and community members across all represented or impacted schools within the cluster. So, those teams are working on building out the plans that I just addressed in the previous communication. We also have several teams, including partnerships with the health department, the mayor's office, many others, to really be side by side with us as we create our reopening plan. And we are well on our way, planning around our public health response, as well as instructional programming moving into next school year. Part of that was also in response to what we're doing for summer, to keep our kids engaged in learning, as we've already communicated as well, the need to get devices to our students. We know that that has always been a challenge for us, so we have already distributed about 10,000 devices to our students to keep them connected, as well as the connectivity response that I shared earlier. So, all of that is in place, a specific team that's working on the transition, and I know that transition is going to be important for our students who did not and could not anticipate that March 11th would be their last day of school this year. So, that's critically important for all impacted students in the consolidated schools, as well as every other school in the district. So, we will continue to, as we move forward in the weeks and months to come, to build our plans, whether that be us being in a, in our traditional setting, or blended setting, or virtual setting, moving into next school year. So, all of the above is happening, and we do have teams that are intentionally planning and supporting the White Creek Cluster plans that you have referenced.
Thank you, Director Battle, thank you Chair.
Thanks, councilmember. All right, as we pass through an hour and 40 minutes of this, I want to mention to the last three councilmembers in the queue, I've been pretty flexible about what constitutes a question related to the operating budget, because these are all important topics, but as we've had these folks answering questions for 100 minutes now, if we can maybe keep it more tightly tied to the operating budget, that would be helpful. Councilmember Gamble, you're up next.
Thank you Chair Mendez, and I'd just like to start by echoing all of the gratitude and sentiment expressed for Dr. Battle and her team, and all of the teachers across the district that serve our students and families. I just have one question, and it revolves around the allotment that teachers have received in the past for classroom supplies. I believe the teaching profession is probably the, one of the few, if not the only, public service professions that I'm aware of, that where the teachers have to pay out of their pocket to buy supplies to do their job, and so that students can learn more effectively. My question is, will that allotment that teachers normally receive, or have received in the past for classroom supplies be included, or is it included in this year's budget?
Thank you for that question, and I'll take this one, and Dr. Battle, feel free to follow up, please. Yes, the answer to your question is yes, we do provide, as a district, $200 per teacher to use for classroom materials and supplies. There's also $200 per teacher, excuse me, $100 per teacher that's provided to each school, and a pool of teachers, a committee of teachers determines how those pooled funds would be spent. In addition, each school, through their student-based budgets, each school is charged with making sure that they budget an adequate amount for instructional materials and supplies for teachers, so that hopefully teachers won't have to spend out of their pocket for basic supplies. And so, there are several different sources of funding for instructional materials and supplies, and the answer to your question is yes, what has been included in the current year and prior years is still included in this budget proposal.
Wonderful, thank you.
And if I can also add that recently Pencil launched their Together for Teachers Initiative, which will be happening in July, and part of that initiative is to provide every teacher in Metro National Public Schools supplies at the start of the school year, as well as reinforcing the opportunity for our teachers to shop at the pencil, LP pencil box periodically during the year to replenish those supplies as needed.
Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Two folks left, councilmembers Porterfield and Johnston, go ahead, councilmember Porterfield.
Thank you so much Chair, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I'll try to make these as quick as I can. The budget that you guys have submitted, did that include, I heard you guys mention it, but I wasn't clear on it, did that include giving all metro employees, MMPS employees, excuse me, up to the $15 an hour living wage?
That is not included in this budget proposal, and again, that has a cost of an additional approximately $4.9 million, and that is not included here.
Okay, thank you so much, because by my calculations, if my math is correct, it looks like at about, for a home that's about $160,000, it looks like about $5.60 a year, or about .47 cents a month, to get our employees to a living wage, I would love to see, I know that we are struggling to figure out how we can make this happen, but I would love to see a living wage for all of our employees. My next question is about central office, I know it's been a lot of conversation today around the salaries at central office, and I believe that there may be a little bit of a misnomer, so if you could kind of clarify for me, when you're talking about central office staff, is my understanding, and I may be wrong, so please clarify, some of the employees that fall under central office staff are currently seeing students. If I understand correctly, central office just means that they're not assigned to be serving as a special education coach, or in a different position that is traveling amongst different schools, is that correct, or if not, please clarify that for me.
I'll attempt to answer, and then of course, Dr. Battle, follow up. That is correct, the problem with trying to define central office is that there's no good definition, and that's what also makes it difficult to compare school district to school district, because it's really nebulous, and as you said, if an employee does not have an assigned school, home base, they may travel from school to school, there may be school psychologists that go to multiple schools, social workers would be- Social workers would be another group of employees. A number of our IT employees spend the vast, vast majority of their day out in schools, working with teachers, working on devices in schools, et cetera. And so it's very difficult to try to define quote unquote "central office." But to your point, if an employee doesn't have a location code at a particular school, then typically they are referred to as district-wide employees or central office.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for, I just wanted that to be clarified for anyone that may be listening, because I think sometimes the conversation is that MMPS is heavy with central office staff, and I think people don't understand that many of those central office staff that we're referring to are actually in schools every single day, servicing our students. So I just want to make sure that that's clarified, so that people will get a better understanding of what they're saying. My next question is about the custodians. It is my understanding that the company that we currently have a contract with, that they laid off 300 custodians. I wanted to find out if that is accurate information?
My understanding is that the current contractor, of course, will only have approximately half the number of schools next year that they do this year. And so I'm assuming they are in the process of making sure that the labor matches the reduced square footage that they have. I'm also told that they are working fairly closely with the new contractor, so that those employees who may be being laid off by the current contractor would be picked up by the new contractor. And those employees, in fact, many of them could stay at the same schools where they are, but they are working for the new contractor.
Okay, thank you. I just needed to get clarification on that, because from, again, I just want to make sure that the right information is going out, that there were 300 custodians that were laid off due to coronavirus. And I just wanted to make sure, because we're talking about Metro Government not making cuts, and that MMPS has not had to make cuts, but it sounds like there have been cuts made. So I just want to make sure that that is the right information. And the last question that I have, CDC guidelines went out yesterday about school reopenings, and based on those guidelines, I don't see how MMPS will be in a position to open in the fall based on the guidelines given by the CDC and the current budget. So has there been any conversation around how we can utilize CARES funding to increase the MMPS budget, so that you all will be able to open safely, and so that our children and our teachers and staff members can be safe upon reopening?
I'll jump in first and address the planning. There has been an enormous amount of planning that has already taken place, and an enormous amount of planning that will have to happen between now and August. And that planning is happening in collaboration with our health officials and others who are well informed about the guidelines and the proactive measures we need to take to prioritize students and faculty's safety and health upon return. So there's an enormous amount of planning that's already happening there. With regards to the CARES Act, the one thing that we have to be mindful about is that that is one-time funding that should be prioritized in response to COVID-19. And as we talked about, there are several buckets that we will have to address, including PPE, including nutrition services, we've already talked about, as well as the digital divide that we're experiencing as a district. And those dollars won't go far, particularly with the impact of us not receiving the full $26 million. So I'll just say, you know, in responding to this question, I've appreciated every opportunity to collaborate and partner with others to help us realize our goals for next year as we're planning. You know, we'll definitely keep planning for a safe opening next year, if that is all possible. But we are also planning around various scenarios, given, you know, our ability to flatten the curve and to keep everyone safe. So more to come. I wish I had a crystal ball to be able to share what August would look like. I don't know, but we're constantly responding to the guidelines that are being provided and the guidance provided from our health officials.
Well, thank you so much. The rest of my questions were actually already addressed by Councilmember Rosenberg and a few others. You guys have done a phenomenal, phenomenal job. We thank you. We thank you for feeding our students and families during the pandemic, during the tornado. You guys went above and beyond to take care of all of our students. So thank you for what you have done, and you are stretching and making a lot with the little, and we appreciate you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thanks, Councilmember. All right. Last in our queue is Councilmember Johnston. Go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Dr. Battle, thank you so much. I appreciate your leadership in such a ridiculous situation that we're in. I was thrilled at your appointment. So thank you so much for all of your hard work and leadership. My question is, what measures were taken once we realized that this school year, you know, we were not going to be able to have the kids back into schools for the rest of the school year at least, what measures outside of the reorganization of central office were taken to mitigate losses? And the reason that I ask that is because I was a little bit shocked earlier in the conversation here, that all of the food services were remained on the payroll. And I understand that the nutrition services, some of that was obviously needed, but not all of them. And so it just kind of made me wonder, you know, what was being done to mitigate these losses? And if we could get a list of those things, so that we know kind of, you know, what those measures were, because we're sitting here looking at trying to find $15.1 million, what all was done?
Chris, you want to share what we did as far as targeted savings to realize the $52 million-plus going towards the end of June 30?
Sure, be glad to. When we were asked to look at maximizing our budget reductions for the remainder of this fiscal year, of course, that was aided by the fact that schools were closed. For a number of weeks, it wasn't known whether schools would be reopening and students would be coming back. And so there was hesitancy at that point regarding some of the reductions. And then, once it became known that schools would not reopen for the remainder of the year, that sort of solidified some of the savings that we had tentatively identified. And what we had done was with our budget team, which is very small, but they had worked throughout our budget, department by department, looking at all of the non-personnel expenses that are in the budget to see what had been spent and what was remaining, and then looking at all of our open purchase orders to see what needed to be spent and what did not. And when I say needed to be spent, it was basically, it had to be an emergency, or it had to be something that was required to provide essential services to our students and families during this time when schools were closed. And so that was the process that we used as far as identifying those $52 million. Part of that sort of goes back to one of the previous council members' questions. We did talk to our provider of custodial services, and once we knew that schools weren't coming back into session, we asked them to curtail staffing at schools, reducing scope of work, because there was no one in the schools. We didn't completely abandon schools, but we did fairly significantly curtail staffing for custodial. But to your point, we did continue to pay all staff, I believe the same as Metro Government did. And so that did contribute to, for instance, with the nutrition services fund, that did contribute to their deficit situation, since they are a self-supporting enterprise fund with very minimal revenue coming in. I'll stop there and see what Dr. Battle would like to add.
No, I think you did hit on it, Chris. And just kind of recalling our timeline, that we were in a state of uncertainty there for a while, not knowing that we were going to resume school. At the same time, we continue to increase our services, particularly with nutrition services, and opening up additional sites and running routes for students to obtain meals. And so that was a service that also continued to expand, even as we were looking at the closure of the end of the school year. And as Chris mentioned, this is a very similar situation to just about every other school district, because we all were facing a great need with regards to nutrition services. We were providing meals to any student under the age of 18 through the guidance that we were receiving. And so with that, and being really responsive to what we're hearing back from communities and some of the folks that are on the call, we continue to expand our services to ensure that we were reaching as many students as we possibly could for them to have meals.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Councilmember?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much for bearing with us to be last in line, Councilmember Johnston. All right. Thank you so much. You guys answered questions for almost two hours. It's basically, thank you. We really appreciate you doing that. And I'll just echo briefly what so many of my colleagues said about how thankful we are for everything everybody at MMPS is doing for the city and for our children. So thank you for being here, and that will be the end of today's hearing. Appreciate it.